All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd ask that you would please rise as we welcome Pastor Kate Brunz to give our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. O Lord, our God, as this new year unfolds, we pray these three principles may continue to guide the leaders of our community, to allow the truths learned and the traditions kept from the past, that they would inform our deliberations and our resolutions for this year. And whenever there are disagreements or discord, Lord, grant us wisdom and grace to negotiate through them to a just resolution. And Lord bless each and every one of these leaders with the patience and the endurance to meet each issue set before them with the resolve to set the well-being of this city and its residents as their worthy goal. Bless this meeting and the business to be discussed and decided here. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. And it is January 2nd, 2024, and we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council Order. Roll call. Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business this evening is the approval of the agenda, and we will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor, council members. Happy New Year. We have a request from Councilmember Kremeyer to remove items number four and seven from the consent agenda. Otherwise, no additional changes that I'm aware of to the agenda this evening, Your Honor.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion approving the agenda with those modifications.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Jim. Second, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Under public hearings this evening, we have a public hearing for a tax rebate program for a property located at 1395 Lenora Way, and we will call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is our first tax rebate of the year for a housing project. It is actually from 2021, however, so the home has been built and has a resident living in it, so any agreement that we enter into would, rather than being with Habitat for Humanity, which is what we've done with their homes in the past, would be directly with the person living in the home. Her name is Caitlin. So this house was built in 2021. Its market value now is about $140,000 is what it was estimated at when it was written, and I believe the county has it valued at about $60,000 now. So it is the Habitat for Humanity home, which means it was built by volunteers in the community to help a person achieve their goals of homeownership. So if you have any questions about the program or about this application in particular, let me know. Bill's got a question.
Yes, Bill.
And maybe just point out, we would probably, at the next council meeting run, bring through the resolution of accounts, then the payment for last year's abatement kind of retroactively, because that's kind of how we found it when we were reconciling our abatement payments that you saw went through probably the last council meeting, so.
All right. And so we do need a public hearing for that?
We do need a public hearing. Yep, it was noticed in the paper, so.
All right. At this time, we will open the public hearing for tax rebate for a property located at 1395 Lenora Way. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please step to the lectern. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and it's back to the council. We will be looking for a resolution approving that property tax rebate.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that comment.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott, for the second. Go ahead.
Clara, you mentioned that the market value is at 140, but out of town county values it at 60,000. Did I not hear that right, or was there some? How can we explain that?
I think it's the partial value, since it's always a year later, so it was probably maybe midway into construction when it was valued for pay 24. No.
Okay.
That's probably.
It kind of takes a year to catch up to full value, so.
So can I ask, why was it built in '21 then, and now it's '24 that it's coming?
They did submit it earlier. They submitted it in 2021, and I just missed it.
Right.
Didn't see it in there.
Okay. So are we taking that off your bonus, then?
Yes. It is substantial, so.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no bids to award this evening. Under petitions communications, we have the open forum will come next, but first we want to recognize and acknowledge the retirement of a public service employee for 27 years, Jeff Walvotny. Jeff, would you please come to the podium, so we can recognize you for your 27 years?
Thank you.
All right. Whereas Jeff Walvotny has submitted his intent to retire effective December 31st, 2023, and whereas Jeff was hired as a refuse carrier on October 10th, 1996, whereas Jeff moved to the utility maintenance light equipment operator at The Burner on April 4th, 1997, and whereas on February 28th, the year 2000, Jeff moved to the park maintenance mechanic, and on December 10th of that same year, I'm sorry, 20 years later, 2020, he moved to a refuse driver, a position he has held until the present time. Whereas Jeff's skill and knowledge in maintaining and repairing a variety of small engines, his ability for growing a variety of flowers was crucial in keeping our parks maintained and beautified over the past 20 years. And whereas Jeff transitioned to a refuse driver, his positive attitude and acceptance of change increased our level of service to the residents and customers of the city of Fergus Falls. Jeff has always had a propensity to laugh and have fun at work, which will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls to accept the resignation of Jeff Walvotny and thank him for his 27 years of dedicated service as an employee of the city of Fergus Falls. The above foregoing resolution was offered at a city council meeting by Councilmember Jim Fish. It was seconded by Councilmember Tom Ruffer, and it was adopted by the following vote. Roll call. Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Thank you, Jeff. Now we have to ask for a speech. I guess we'll ask Guy to give a speech.
Yeah, as you stated, Mayor, in the resolution, we've valued Jeff as a very reliable, trustworthy employee for the last 27 years, and I don't know, show us your thumbs. Not green, but he really did a good job for us planting, nursing, spending countless hours in the greenhouse, just getting these plants ready to maturity for planting, and so we appreciate all that you've done, beyond that, the last 27 years. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, now we will move along to the open forum portion of our meeting. Anyone wishing to speak to the council regarding a topic that is not on the agenda this evening, you're welcome to do so at this time. Please step to the lectern and state your name.
Good evening, council, and happy new year. Following up on some previous council meetings, I'm here to ask about how much money has been spent so far by staff in time meetings in print on the franchise tax. It was pretty apparent that the public didn't want it. It's pretty apparent the city is going to move forward. So if the next meeting, if Bill could provide us that information, that would be great. Thank you, and best of all this year.
Thank you, Mr. Leighton.
And we are pulling that information. Councilmember Kremeyer asked me for that earlier today. We'll be able to pull the actual cost, but as far as staff time, we don't track our, we don't code our time when we were working on it, but so the bills, we'll be able to pull.
Certainly. Okay. And we'll bring that back. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council this evening on any items not on the agenda? All right, seeing no one else, we will move along to the consent agenda. There are 11 items remaining. If anyone wishes to pull any other items, we can certainly do so. If not, I would entertain a resolution approving the remaining 11 items. Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution designating the 2024 depositories. And Councilmember Kremeyer, did you have a question?
I guess the only question that I have is it's all out-of-town banks or lending institutions or financial institutions. Is there a reason why it wouldn't be in town, Bill, or any thoughts on that?
So currently on here, we have Galliard Capital Management, which is the money managers that were chosen a number of years ago. They manage our long-term portfolio, and then for the more liquid, we go through the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust 4M Fund, also with the League of Minnesota Cities. That is linked with US Bank, so that's really why we have chosen then, and we were actually, I think, with US Bank prior to going with the 4M, if I think back, but it's been years. So it's been years we've been with US Bank, and we've stayed with them in that situation because basically we don't pay any fees. You know, certainly the area banks have asked us about that. They know our situation with that, but so, you know, the 4M, it's a money market. It's worked well for cities liquid, but that's certainly up to the council if we do something different. So the recommendation has been to stay with the 4M, and thus, US Bank being the only bank that's linked with the 4M, so that's really been the key for why we've stayed there. And the last one, Principal, they handle our custody of our long-term portfolio, linked up to Galliard, that first one, so.
Thanks, Bill.
You bet.
Any other questions? With that, I would look for a resolution designating those 2024 depositories.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim.
Second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. Item number seven is a resolution affirming the code of conduct for elected officials. Again, Councilmember Kremeyer.
I guess the question I have on that is, what do we mean by affirming on that? Maybe rolfe? I mean, passing or?
Well, what would you like it to mean?
I don't know. I guess I'm trying to decipher what that actually means, what the affirming, maybe Andrew knows, I don't know.
I think it's a recognition that there's an obligation to follow this code of conduct and a resolution of the council saying that we intend to do so.
Okay. I guess kind of the paperwork that I have, the last time we talked about code of conduct was back in May 10th, I believe, at a council meeting, when we kind of went through a few things, we talked about, I think that's when it was actually put forth, this new code of conduct, and as I'd like to reiterate, is I think it's a waste of time, just due to the fact that the code of conduct that we have now is not being enforced. I think that, why have a code of conduct if it's not being enforced? I think it's going to limit dialogue. I think it's going to limit discussion, and it's going to try to squelch, I believe, speech, the way that is read, the way I interpret it. You know, as you look at different things of what is in the code right now, I was looking at the City Code 33.02, talking about the term of public official. As used in Chapter 33, includes elected officials, the city council, mayor, and appointed officials. And then in 33.13, sanctions and enforcement, it says, "A public official who violates a code of ethics may also be subject to disciplinary action, including termination of city employment or removal from appointed positions." I know that we got ethics and code of conducts. You know, it has to do with doing the right thing, is what it comes down to, and I think this is going to hinder discussion and hinder things to be brought up to the public, because they need to know this. They need to hear different things. They need to hear that there was profanity used against a person in this city by a council member. I'm not going to say the name, but that was back in, oh, let's see, that was back, it was on a Facebook page, post of 8/28 to 23. And I know I didn't hear anything about it, and I don't think anybody else did either. I don't know, because I didn't hear. But those are the things. Why have these codes if we're not going to enforce anything, you guys? That's my question. Thank you.
Scott.
I was on the group that did the edit and update to this, and there was one edit that I overlooked at the time. And so on page six of what we have on there, under mayor and council conduct with city staff, I'd just like to suggest one simple edit. This particular paragraph starts with, "Do not attend meetings with city staff unless requested by staff," and reads now, "Even if the mayor and/or council member does not say anything, the mayor and/or council member's presence implies support, shows partiality, intimidates staff, and hampers staff's ability to do their job objectively." I think that the way it reads, it just assumes that our staff are not able to kind of stand up for themselves, you might say, and do their jobs well, and I would just like to make the edit that it should say, "The presence may imply support, show partiality, intimidate staff, and/or hamper staff's ability to do their job." So a minor edit, but I would like to add that as an amendment, or propose that as an amendment to the resolution.
Would you like to offer a resolution affirming the code of conduct with that?
With that edit.
Thank you, Scott. Second, further comments?
On that one, it's like support could go either way. How do you define? Because obviously if it's a meeting, say, for example, a planning commission meeting, and somebody wants to, you know, build something or have a change of use of something, this says, "Show support." Well, the support could be for not doing it or support for doing it, so how would you know? And I think, you know, if it's a meeting that's open to the public, I think it should define that if it's a public meeting, then council members should be able to attend. That's part of our role. If it's a private meeting in the go-room with three people and somebody decides to kind of show up, that's probably different. But if it's already a public meeting, like planning commission or one of the committees, you know, whether it's historical district or anything else, I think council members should be, you know, able to kind of attend without fear of reprisal the other way, because that's part of our representation of the people. And then the other thing, I still think this document is extremely wordy, and whether or not we could get this down to something that's more concise. I mean, we're kind of being asked this evening to sign a one-page document, but this thing is like 14 pages. But so we can condense it to one page to sign, but we've got a very wordy document, and I'm just wondering if a committee got paid by the word to develop this. And then the other thing, I think we should also include in this, it should not be just code of conduct, but I think it should include code of ethics, code of conflict of interest, sorry. So I think it's a combined document of conflict of interests and, you know, ultimately, you know, code of ethics, because they go hand in hand, you know, very much so. So I'm not sure how we would like to address, like, obviously the changes that kind of Scott's doing, but I think I would like to see it more concise and combined.
Just for clarity, I think conflict of interest is a state law, right?
Yeah, there is. Because our auditors check it every year. They go through our.
So that's.
Thankfully, they don't find any problem, so you're all good.
It doesn't hurt to reiterate it. I mean, we're all under that, like, by law, you know, a conflict of interest. So I don't think it hurts to reiterate. So Tom, did you have a comment?
As one of the highly-paid members of the committee, if I recall correctly, I think the original wording of that section was something to the effect of council members should not attend.
Yes.
Meetings.
Yes, and we had changed that.
And we took that part out, because of course, you know, and I think the spirit of this is attending like a city staff meeting, not an open meeting.
Right.
And we can specify that in here, that's just fine, but I think it's going to an internal city staff meeting. I think if you guys agree with that, is sort of the spirit of this section, but I'm happy to clarify it. And then as far, the sheet that was printed out is just the last page of the, and kudos to Lynn for saving paper. But I think, you know, it's just, it's, you know, if, you know, the voters, you know, I'll sign it and show my compliance with this, and, you know, and we're all, everyone is fallible, everyone makes mistakes. I think it's up to the council to police ourselves. If a council member feels like something in here has been violated, then that council member can address it according, you know, to the procedures that are laid out in here, and, you know, as far as, yeah, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Tom. So is there a, Andrew, you had a comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, Your Honor, council members, just want to say you guys are all very consistent, because I just, while we were sitting here, I pulled up the minutes from October 2nd of 2023, which is when the council adopted this, and I think everybody who's made points tonight made the exact same points in 2023, so you guys are, still feel the same way you did then, but it was approved by the council, October 2nd of 23. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, so that's all.
Is there a change? Thank you, Andrew. Anthony, is there a change that easily could be made on the fly right now that you would feel comfortable with?
I think it's more just like, at some point, maybe we just look at a kind of a, maybe this fall, we can reaffirm, revisit the physical form and go through it.
Good enough.
Yeah. I mean, as I say, just, and maybe we can find some examples of a shorter document. The more words there are, the more it's open to multiple variation and interpretation. Like, if it says, "You should not do this," and it's blank, you know, straight, this, as we just pointed out, you can read it different ways, so you can always make something work for your point of view.
Well, it leaves us wiggle room.
Okay.
I do not approve of wiggle room, just so.
Andrew had pointed out that we were consistent, and I guess I'd need to also then remind everyone that we started with something that was well over 30 pages, and we cut it down to about half of that. So I don't know if it was because we just knew that Anthony was going to say, "How come this is so wordy?" But I think that great strides were made to bring it to a manageable size, and it seemed at the time to answer the question that we were asked to answer, and I think that it's a good document for what it is right now. If down the road, Anthony or someone else wants to create a new committee to revisit it, we can do that at that time.
Thanks, Scott. All right, so we have a resolution affirming the code of conduct for elected officials that was put together by this city council. We have a second. Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Joe. Yes.
Yes. That resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, tonight, we have claims in the amount of $462,742.39. If anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to our city finance director.
I will offer a resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I have a question for Bill.
Just one second, we'll get a second, then.
I'll second it, and then.
You were passing it to me.
I think Scott has a question, too, but go ahead, Anthony.
Did you see there was like the Department of the Navy MSWC Electro-optic Loan Program on top of page two?
So I hooked that one up, too, because we don't pay the Department of Navy very often, so.
No. I wondered if it was something to do with Port Authority.
But it's dealing with some night vision sites.
Right.
For the equipment over there, so.
Where's the numbers?
Don't be picking on my Navy boys now.
Can we check those out?
Right. I just wondered like where the shoreline ocean was coming in, the Navy was coming into town, that was all. Thank you, Bill.
Perhaps it's at Lake Alice. That's about it. The question that I had was, let's see, at the end of the general itemization, there was a note for $30,000, $30,500 to Ben Wolden Landscaping for the retaining wall repair. This was a project that actually goes back more than a year, when the retaining wall next to the Union Avenue Bridge washed out in that heavy rain, and it took a long time for that project to get completed, and so the bill has finally come due for that. And then speaking with Bill earlier, I just was curious about two things. One was whether this was the total cost of the project, and then whether or not there was any retainage for what's yet to be done. There's a cap to be finished, and then also whether insurance covered some of it. So as I understand it, this is nearly the total cost of the project. There's another $2,000 yet to be paid when the cap is finished next spring, and that insurance did cover about two-thirds of this, just under $20,000. That's it.
Thank you, Scott. Other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, departments, board or committee or department reports, pardon me, there are no reports from staff or administrative officers, no older unfinished business. Under new business, two items. First, we'll look for a motion for an acting mayor. Your Honor.
Like, make motion?
Oh, Laura, you can go.
I was going to make a motion to appoint Anthony for the acting mayor.
Thank you, Laura. Someone like to second that?
I'd second.
Yeah, okay. Tom, did you have?
I was going to reappoint Mr. Kwame in light of his even-keeled performance and just great mayor-ing.
But you can only act on one at a time, as I understand.
Well, just like we did last year, we'll act on one at a time, so. The first, there's a motion and a second, let's see, is it a motion? Motion and a second to appoint Anthony Hicks as the acting mayor. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Next is a motion approving the 2024 mayor and council appointments. You have a copy of them. I don't know that I need to run through them, unless you'd like me to. Well, what the heck? It's before 6 o'clock. I'll run through them real quick. So Board of Equalization is Jim Fish, Brent Thompson, Tom Ruffer, and Anthony Hicks is the manager. That revolves every year, so that flip-flops. Business Development, that's Anthony Hicks. Fire Department Relief Association is the fire chief. Scott Rachel's the city administrator. Fire Department Trust Fund is the fire chief, and Anthony Hicks. The Golf Board is Scott Kwame. Hockey Association, Tom Ruffer. Investment Committee, Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director, Certified Financial Planner, Jim Fish. Assistant Finance Director, Certified Financial Planner, Jim Fish. Legislative Committee is myself, Tom Ruffer, Anthony Hicks, and the city administrator. Pig Access Board is Councilmember Al Kremeyer. Personnel Committee is Laura Jobe and Scott Kwame. Senior Citizens Board, Councilmember Thompson, Tax Levy, myself, Laura Jobe. City Administrator and Scott Rachels. Visit Fergus Falls, Jim Fish. Housing and Redevelopment Authority, HRA Board, Scott Kwame. Uh, West Central Initiative Redevelopment District, myself. Port Authority, Brent Thompson, Anthony Hicks, Laura Jobe, Tom Ruffer, Scott Rachels, Jim Fish, Scott Kwame. And the Council Cannabis Committee that will work with the Chief of Police is, uh, Councilmember Laura Jobe, Scott Rachels, Scott Kwame, and myself. So I would look for a motion to approve those appointments.
I'll make that motion.
Thank. My pen back, thank you. Thank you, Laura.
I'll second.
Second, Jim. Questions? Comments? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries.
I got a question, though.
Yes, please.
Um, and the rationale of bringing the Port Authority back to council. Obviously, it had some private citizens on it previously.
Yeah, so we, um, 2018, 2019, we looked to bring some, um, non-council members back onto the Port Authority, and, uh, we gave that an effort, uh, through some discussion with Port Authority members, with city staff. We looked at, uh, I'm looking at the Port Authority in 2024 as an opportunity to tackle some issues around economic development, be a bridge between the efforts that are happening with Greater Fergus Falls. And I think it's important that the entire, um, council, uh, and, and by statute, there's seven members of the council that can be on there, so there's two of us that aren't, and that's a rotating basis. Uh, the one member of the council that's not on the Port Authority this year was appointed to the Port Authority last year. So really, it's just a matter of, I think there's some important, uh, economic development matters that need to come, uh, to the, uh, through the Port Authority. I think we need to use to its full capacity, and I think in order to do that, we can do that with the seven council members and utilize the, uh, the, uh, options that are available in economic development. So that was the rationale there.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Other questions? I believe that concludes our agenda. Lynn, did you have any announcements? All right. Happy New Year, everyone. We're adjourned.